Good morning, everybody. Welcome to our regular meeting of, I guess it's still the regular meeting of December 1st, it's been continued from last Tuesday. Call the roll, please.
Vice Chair Fambro.
Present.
Commissioner Gago.
Here.
Commissioner Omedo.
Present.
Chairman Blankenhorn.
Present.
Commissioner Donald.
Present.
Commissioner McEagles.
Good morning. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is approval of the agenda. Commissioners, I'd like to request that we move the Health Support Act resolution to the top of the agenda. We have Mr. Bill Patton here, the CBO of Holy Cross, and he has to leave at 9:40. On Tuesday, we had our 9:40 deadline on.
Mr. Chairman, I will second that with the addition of commissioners' announcements.
All right. And is that at the end of the agenda?
Wherever you would like that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. We can put the commissioners' report after the county manager's report, so I'll amend my motion to include that. We have a second. Any discussion? If not, call for the vote.
Vice Chair Fambro.
Yes.
Commissioner Gago.
Yes.
Commissioner Omedo.
Yes.
Commissioner Donald.
Yes.
Chairman Blankenhorn.
Yes, thank you. So we will move on to the resolution.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I do know that Carol Miller is in the audience, and she would like to speak before we vote on the resolution, but we did not have Citizens Forum last time, so...
Well, we will have it. I just wanted to move it down after the resolution, just to make sure we were able to complete that by 9:40. And I suppose if Ms. Miller has something to say regarding the resolution, she can do so under that.
All right, thank you.
Before the vote?
Yes.
Okay. And we have also a statement from Jean Nichols.
All right.
To reach very far.
Okay, thank you. So, let's see, where was this? This is 10A, which is now top of our list, 1A. And this is a discussion and decision regarding approval of Resolution 2015-60, and it is a resolution claiming a special election to consider imposing a mill levy pursuant to the Hospital Funding Act to fund operation and maintenance of Holy Cross Hospital. Mr. Malone will present the resolution to us.
Chairman, Commissioners, what I'm going to do, I think, is read the actual question that will go to the people if you decide to pass this resolution with one quick explanation before I read it. As a result of public comment, I thought that it would be helpful to clarify one point and add one phrase to the resolution that was included in your packets. And as I read the, after I read the resolution as it now currently is formulated, I'll point out the one change, so that you're familiar with that. So the question that will go to the people if you decide to pass this resolution is the following: Should Taos County impose a mill levy in the amount of $1 on each $1,000 of net taxable value of property in the county, a one-mill levy, effective the 2016 tax year for a period of four years, to fund the operation and maintenance of Holy Cross Hospital either directly or through a healthcare facilities contract? That last phrase, "either directly or through a healthcare facilities contract," is what I added, for the purpose of making clear that the Hospital Funding Act allows a county to expend the funds from the mill levy in either of those ways.
Bob, Commissioners, any questions or discussion? If not, then I guess Ms. Miller, if you'd like to address us?
Yeah, maybe one other point I should make clear quickly before we start the discussion, in case of any comment out from, from the public, is that when we discussed this at the last meeting, and I was directed to go ahead and prepare the resolution, and you provided the details for me in terms of the number of years, the amount of the mill levy, et cetera, the discussion was in terms of that generating $1.5 million a year. After discussions with Randy Vaca, yeah, Randy's here, after discussions with Randy Vaca, we determined that after applying the collection rate that we normally apply and actually running the exact numbers, they, at a 90 percent collection rate, it would generate in the range of $1.28 million, not $1.5 million. And if you need more detail on that, Randy has the details.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Bob, with regards to the current contract that we have now, taking care of the hospital, maintenance of the hospital, we are not committed to continue the contract as per this, the first paragraph of the first wire ads. It can be anyone else that could come in within the next one year, two years, three years, four years, as long as these taxes are levied, correct?
Yes, these monies could be used either directly by the county, or if there turned out to be a termination of our current lease with Taos Health Systems, the contract could be with somebody else. That's why it's stated in generic terms, not specifically to Taos Health Systems.
So it doesn't commit us to the current contract?
Well, you say to the current contract. The current contract has its own relationship provisions. Those are independent of this. But this money could be spent either directly by the county, as an example, there was discussion of their boiler needing replacement. We could expend the money directly through our procurement process and replace the boiler, or we could enter into a healthcare facilities contract with somebody else if the lease with the hospital were terminated. So no, it does not tie us in specifically to healthcare, Taos Health Systems.
Good morning. I'm here to speak in opposition of a bailout for Taos Health Systems.
Did you state your name to the...
Oh, I'm sorry, Carol Miller. I'm with the Pecos Pinesco Community Coalition and a longtime advocate and funder and developer of healthcare programs in Taos County and the region. Today's a sad day for me. This is a bailout vote for the hospital that reeks of cronyism and contempt for the public rather than the open and transparent process that the community has been begging for over the past few years. Others opted not to come today, but I wanted this opportunity to look each of you in the eye and tell you how unfair it is to choose to impose yet another health tax on the people of Taos at this time. Before the people are taxed again, there must be immediately and always going forward complete transparency of the hospital books. No sunshine, no bailout. People are hurting financially. Almost exactly two years ago today, an open letter to the Commission was published in the Taos News reminding the Commission that Taos County was one of the top 50 rural counties with the largest increase in poverty between 2007 and 2011, the only New Mexico county on that list. We all feel the effects of the economic downturn every day. We are not in support of more tax dollars being provided to Holy Cross Hospital until such time as they provide 100 percent honesty, transparency, and accountability to the people of the county. The county commission must be able to examine the books along with the public. Only then will there be an informed and fair decision possible. This was the letter in the Taos News, that excerpt. It's painful for me to look back and think about the healthcare system that was promised to the public in 1991. During five community meetings held around the county, Taosayos were promised a new public hospital if they passed a dedicated gross receipts. The process was open and transparent. It was obvious that a new facility was needed, and the bond passed with a comfortable margin. Over the years, the tax has been renewed by the voters to keep the hospital updated. Despite the 1991 vote for a public hospital, the Commission made a mistake when the new hospital was ready to open. The Commission kept Taos Health Systems an unaccountable private organization in charge of operating the hospital. Taos Health System essentially serves as a corporate middleman, choosing first BRIM and out-of-state Oregon-based for-profit management corporation, and then replacing BRIM with Quorum, a Tennessee-based for-profit hospital corporation. These bad decisions by THS have led to the financial condition of the hospital today. Instead of reinvesting funds and strengthening community health in Taos, the money left in the state first to Oregon and then to Tennessee. The image in my mind of the removal of health funds from Taos is one of a truck sitting at the hospital entrance with pallets of cash getting ready to leave town. It is irresponsible to look back at 20 years of health dollars sent out of town, millions of dollars, and now come to the public to ask for a bailout. Two short years ago, both the county and county responded to the hospital's request for a one-time emergency bailout and ponied up with a lot of cash. Because of the contract with the Quorum mismanagement team, some of those public emergency funds also left town to corporate headquarters. Where in the resolution you will be voting today, is there any assurance to the voters that their sacrifice will be honored with oversight, with open books, and open meetings? Nowhere. Once again, the public is asked only for their money, not their ideas or voice. I do not understand how or why Holy Cross Hospital is named in the resolution. It is not an actual legal entity. Taos Health Systems Incorporated in January of 1980 with no mention of Holy Cross Hospital. Holy Cross Hospital was dissolved, and the certificate of dissolution was approved by the state of New Mexico on August 6, 1981. Holy Cross Hospital later reemerged, I guess, for nostalgia and marketing reasons. It is only the business name of one part of Taos Health Systems. It's a DPA. THS bylaws revised in 2012 state that the hospital manages the hospital as well as, quote, "other divisions of THS," end quote. It is important to note that only one of the four stated purposes of THS is to maintain and operate a hospital. The 2012 bylaws specifically prohibit any Taos County commissioner from serving on the THS board allegedly to avoid a conflict of interest, but at the same time, they require three physician members as if they don't have a conflict of interest. While on the topic of conflicts of interest, up to 20 percent of the THS board are allowed to be shareholders, directors, and/or officers of the corporation holding the management contract. I urge that the resolution be tabled and voted on at a later time. Better language for the resolution should state that the revenues go to Taos County for the purpose of the development and maintenance of a strong healthcare system in the county, including hospital-based care. It is wrong to give all the revenue to THS to do whatever they decide. We hear the same old threat, "Give us more money, or the hospital will close." Yes, healthcare is a tough business, but the power comes from frightened, the threat literally, as your money or your life. This is an old trick, so old, it's time to finally retire it in Taos. As someone who has had a career in healthcare program development and management, I learned a long time ago that small, frontier, and rural communities have a finite amount of money available to pay for healthcare. I've been through every policy, programmatic, and funding fad of the last 40 years. If the goal is a sustainable healthcare system and hospital program design, should follow funds available, not having a wish list and then asking taxpayers for a bailout whenever the wish does not come true. So the two points are, Holy Cross Hospital is not a legal entity, doesn't exist except in some kind of DPA category, and the resolution should not name them in the funds. And I strongly believe the funds should go to Taos County and let the county administer those funds to the public hospital that the county built. Thank you. Larry Miller is going to read a statement from Jean Nichols, who couldn't be here today.
My name is Larry Miller of the Pecos Pinesco Community Group, and I'm reading a statement from Jean Nichols and from Yamo San Juan. Dear Commissioners, because of the short notice of this meeting, I'm not able to attend today, but would like my very brief comment to be considered in your discussion. I have read the statement of Carol Miller, and I'm also opposed to the proposed additional hospital tax for all the reasons she has stated, but if you are determined to have it go to a vote of the people, it should not be voted on in a special election, which costs the taxpayers even more and also has the lowest turnout. The mill levy tax vote should be part of an election where the largest representation of voters is expected. 2016 is an election year. It makes a lot more sense to have a hospital vote added to the general election or even the primary, where you will get a larger cross-section of the public voting on this decision that impacts us all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Hall?
Good morning. Later in this meeting, he wrote on, "Vote this resolution calling for an election, and if approved by this community, in a position of a mill levy, use a board having, quote, 'Determined that one mill levy is necessary to fund the operation and maintenance of Holy Cross Hospital.'" Quote, "I believe that determination is wrong and ill-possible, and should first others for assistance. For you ask this community to tax itself to support a historically financially badly managed and badly overseen hospital, badly managed by poor health systems incorporated doing business as Holy Cross Hospital, and badly overseen by this board, the Board of County Commissioners. Given the lease requirements, you should advise and instruct the board of directors of Taos Health Systems Incorporated to look elsewhere first. The first entreaties for assistance should be directed to the private financial sector, not the public financial sector, and to those individuals known as Taos Holding Company." The levy, I believe, is designed to provide the hospital approximately $5, $5.5 million over four years, approximately $1.4 million yearly, give or take. Over the past dozen or so years, the hospital spent roughly $2,711,000 on marketing, $3,540,000 on travel and conferences, and $6,530,000 in grants and scholarships, $11,655,000 on those expense categories alone. There's $5.5 million, Mr. Blankenhorn, plus another $5.5 million with another half million added in. During the time, those $11,655,000 were expensed, apparently no suggestion was offered by management to establish your service in anticipation of future capital needs. Consequently, not $1 was set aside in reserve or contingent or randy day funds by the hospital board of directors in anticipation of what can only be described as the very certain and expected capital needs now facing the hospital. The Board of County Commissioners was nowhere to be seen or heard after a word of warning. Had this commission, over the years, been supplied with the required financial records called for in the hospital lease, the commission had been attentive, might have noticed the ongoing and glaringly bad management of the hospital. Bad management and bad oversight everywhere you look. I'm going to read something from the 2011 financial statements, the audited statements, quote, "Rural Community Hospital Demonstration Project." This is from the THS audit statements 2011. "The hospital participates in a CMS demonstration project testing the viability and feasibility of establishing rural community hospitals to provide Medicare-covered inpatient hospital services in rural areas. Under the project, hospital receives reimbursement based on the reasonable cost of providing such services to Medicare beneficiaries as defined by the project. The hospital participated in the project through its initial five-year demonstration period ending May 31, 2010, and in April 2010, the project was extended to the hospital's fiscal year ending May 31, 2015. In April 2011, the hospital elected not to participate in the project for the remaining period due to the unexpected increase in patients enrolled in Medicare Advantage versus Medicare in fiscal year 2010. As a result of the declining enrollment in fiscal year 2011, the hospital refunded payments received from Medicare of $1,761,259 and $2,136,000 during fiscal years 2011 and 2010, respectively. The amounts are netted with debt patient service revenue and the accompanying unsolidated statements of operations." You would never know that unless you read this note with respect to the hospital's debt patient service revenue. Would you not think good management and wise oversight would have called for monitoring the said demonstration project for performance, and if necessary, either not recognizing payments as income or establishing some manner of provisional account? Apparently, no suggestion to do so was made by management, and there was no oversight of the hospital board as well as can be seen. Several months ago, in response to repeated requests at this very podium, the county finally asked the hospital to supply years of required and missing audited financial statements. I've looked at those documents and transcribed almost every one of them. Those audited statements and the nine million tax returns provide the basis for the expensive figures I cited, but not $1 set aside to meet future capital needs is to be found in those documents. My concerns are many. If you've not looked at the hospital's financial statements and reflected upon the questions they surely raised, then I say you're derelict and irresponsible in calling for the proposed election. Whether the tax does or does not represent a financial burden is not the question. The question is one of accountability and responsibility to this community, or more appropriately, the lack thereof on the part of the hospital board of directors. It is unseemly of the hospital board to ask for tax dollars, community dollars, without first approaching the private financial sector, as well as their friends and colleagues in the development cohort. Let the hospital board meet the disclosure and documentation requirements of the private sector and see how they respond to the hospital's requests, see what they're willing to lend to offer. I would be interested in the banking responses. As for their development cohort, friends, and colleagues who have approached Taos Holding Company, with the Louisiana Limited Liability Company, which is Barry Marks, Danny J. Gabriel, Stephen M. Solomon, G. Earls, Humphrey III, Jagged Stoller, Taos Holding Company and his predecessors, and Offspring, Marks and Associates, Taos Regional Medical Center, Taos Holding Company Partnership, Kiara's Cradium, Holy Cross Medical Arts Plaza, Taos Acquisition, and Taos Living Center, to name a few, have owned or had an option to own all of the acreage around the hospital, save the 1.5 acre parcel of the Taos Professional Office Building Partnership. Taos Living Center, a skilled nursing facility, I believe, and one of the Offsprings connected to the hospital via covered breezeway, both facilitate their mutual relationship with the hospital. The fortunes and future of that skilled nursing facility are dependent upon the fortunes and future of the hospital. Let the hospital board approach those fellows for money. Based on the real estate transactions I've seen, a local attorney, Scott Sanger, knows them well, and it is an obvious point of contact. If the hospital is in need of money, let the hospital sell the nearly 19 acres next to the hospital purchased from Taos Holding Company. If Taos Holding Company, the Louisiana Limited Liability Company, truly interested in this community, I'm sure they will let the hospital generously offer for the land they want sold in. Let the hospital ask the financial sector and their friends for assistance before asking this community to rectify their abysmal management and lack of accountability to this community. Process.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner.
Mr. Hall, could you come back here, please? You ran off a bunch of numbers and some CMS. Could you, I didn't understand what you were pointing out, that first part about you were supposed to do a survey or some study, and I just lost you. Could you paraphrase what you were trying to say there?
The CMS, Centers for Medicaid and Medicare Services, evidently sponsored a demonstration project to see if rural community hospitals could be better served, with respect to providing services to Medicare and Medicaid patients, Medicare patients. The hospital decided to participate in that project, and they received additional monies, additional payments, which were contingent upon certain performance measures, whether it was number of patients or volume, or I don't know what the parameters were, but if you met those parameters, you were allowed to keep this exhibition, these additional monies. The hospital didn't meet those parameters, and as a consequence, in one year, they had to return a million and three-quarters dollar, and another year, $2.2 million, a total of $4 million. This money was, during the course of the time that the payments were made, these monies were recognized as income, and no, apparently, there was no monitoring of the demonstration project to the extent that someone could have said, "Well, Jean, we're not really meeting the parameters here. We're not going to get to keep this money." Let's either not recognize the payments as income or set aside some sort of provisional account so that we can, so that we are really and truly honestly and openly representing what our performance is with respect to income. And they didn't do that, and so all, with one stroke, they had to return the $4 million. Does anybody in this community know that?
Do you know what the parameters were?
No, I don't, I don't.
Okay.
But they were fairly, I believe they were fairly simple. You either take care of a certain number of patients, inpatient volume has to be a certain amount. They weren't difficult to monitor, so to speak. It would have been, it would have been easy to monitor. The other part that I was talking about is that during the good times, when the hospital was, quote-unquote, "making money," they were spending, as I said, $3 million and so dollars on conferences and travel. During one year, the figures were over $5 million. In one year, there was close to $1 million in scholarships and grants. Now, I don't know who those scholarships and grants went to, but the point being that before you make, it seems to me, those kinds of payments, that it's important that you maintain the hospital, the capital needs, the building. That building belongs to this community, not to Taos Health Systems, and that wasn't done. So during those, those bullish years, why wasn't money being set aside to meet those surely anticipated capital needs? And then all of a sudden, one day you wake up and say, you know, "The building's falling apart, we have to replace the boiler, we need this, we need that," but we never set any money aside. That's all I'm saying.
And then what years did, was that, they, they got, had to return their money?
They returned the money in fiscal year 2011.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Could I clarify that program?
There were two CMS demonstration programs that Taos Health Systems could have participated in, the one, the Critical Access Hospital, or Medicare Flexibility Hospital. The community, the board decided not to participate because it capped the inpatient beds at 25. The REACH program, which was just described to you, was for rural hospitals with up to 50 beds. It really helped stabilize many, many rural hospitals around the United States, and it's quite shocking. I've always felt, and we've asked at meetings, why the failure to participate if it was related to what the federal government considers reasonable costs. And with that, it's unclear whether they found some of the costs of the hospital to be unreasonable that would have left required money to be returned. And that's been the problem, why we've always asked to see the books. We don't know what the costs are, but we do know that obviously the federal government has found many of those expenses to be unreasonable.
One of the reasons I've been in support of this resolution is because of the openness and accountability of current management and board. They've visited with us on maybe half a dozen occasions. We've had long work studies wherein all of our questions have been answered regarding their finances and management. So my confidence in the current board and management is one of the reasons that I have supported this. In addition, you know, you can go back four or five years, and I'm sure that there were some management mistakes over that time. There's been a very big changes in the landscaping for rural hospitals, but it cannot be denied that regardless, the major, overwhelmingly major factor in the financial difficulties of the hospital stemmed from an annual $9 million reduction in the formula paid by the state and federal governments. That is too big of a hole to fill, and that... That is too big of a hole to fill, and that was the basis of it. The '91 tax has long since been redirected to the school systems, no longer benefits the hospital. The notion that truck loads of cash are being transported out of our community to a corporation in Tennessee is a complete mischaracterization. The Quorum contract is a $300,000 a year contract, most if not all of which comes back to the community in better deals on supplies, consultation, and technical information that is useful to the board and administration in operating a rural hospital. It is no easy task to operate a rural hospital under these conditions today, which is why the vast majority of counties in the state have chosen to utilize the statute that is being considered today, the Health Funding Act. Most communities use that to help support their rural hospitals for very good reason. And so, I think that's all the notes that I had on those comments. As far as private versus public, any private loans have to be, of course, backed up by streams of revenue, and those streams are not currently available to the hospital. Commissioner Fendell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bob, could you address Ms. Miller's issue with the Holy Cross name issue? And I was writing stuff down, so I may have to ask you to reiterate some stuff. Ken?
Yeah, the statute, the statute doesn't require that the mill levy be tied to a particular legal entity. The statute allows the county, the money will come to the county. Ms. Miller wants that to happen, that is exactly what will happen. Under the statute, the county then has the discretion to either spend the money directly, because we own the physical structure, and spend the money directly, for example, I use the example of fixing a boiler or replacing a boiler, or entering into what the act refers to as a hospital facilities contract. That would involve a contract with a private entity, but you don't have to name that private entity in the mill levy. None of the ones that I've seen named the private entity. For example, when Burn Leo County adopted its most recent version of this mill levy, they simply said, "The UNM Hospital," didn't name the legal structure that owns the UNM Hospital. It's simply not required by the act.
Okay, you answered my other question of an issue that she brought up. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioners, so, Mr. Chairman, I would like to see the representatives from the hospital come forward, do their presentation, at least a few minutes. Again, I would like to see as to what they intend to do once those monies do come in, and if they are selected as the entity, Taos Health Systems, to be able to manage these monies, once they are coming in, as to what they intend to do.
Just as a preface to that, I should mention that down the road, if this passes ultimately by the people, the county, if it chooses to enter into a hospital facilities contract, will have a level of control. It will be a negotiated contract. You could say the money will be spent for X, Y, and Z. It might be helpful for that fact to be on the table during this discussion.
Mr. Chairman, if Mr. Malone, if they could also speak to the need of what those needs are currently at the hospital, and what they will need within the next five, 10 years or so.
Thank you, Commissioner Fendell.
Expand on something there, and I asked this before when we talked about it. They would have to meet all governmental procurement requirements, even if we contract to a private corporation, they start to meet our procurement standards.
There's a specific provision in the Hospital Funding Act that says when these mill levy funds are turned over to a private entity through a hospital facilities contract, that that is treated as public money, and has to be expended according to the requirements for public money. That would include audits, procurement, et cetera.
Mr. Chairman, could I just clarify something with Ms. Malone? So, for instance, there used to be a laundry facility. It closed, I guess the boiler broke, the machines, washing machines broke. It's now outsourced. In the hospital lease, it was mentioned as an economic driver, that not only would that facility, could be used to, say, do laundry for county public works, or, you know, even the sheriff's office, or whatever, that it could actually be used. So what you're saying is, those monies could be used, say, if we wanted to earmark some of those monies to fix the boiler, get the washing machines up and running, that that would be something that we could consider as a board if...
Absolutely, and you could do it, again, in two different ways. Under the Hospital Funding Act, you could either do it by putting that requirement in a hospital facilities contract, or you could do it by directly expending that money on behalf of the hospital.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's an important discussion to recognize that flexibility that's built into this question does allow the county considerable oversight going forward. It's also important to remember that it's for a four-year period, it's for the minimum period allowed under the act, and of course, there's considerable accountability in that also, because after four years, it would end, and if there was any need or desire on the hospital's part to re-up it, then they would, again, have to go back to the public. As far as the needs go, the THS has supplied us with a very comprehensive list of all of the capital needs that they have. They've explained to us that in addition to their capital needs, they have a 20-day cash reserve, 20 days. 90, 120 is considered healthy under generally accepted standards. And so if they were able to garner these funds and invest them into their infrastructure, that would save them some of their operating expenses, and hopefully give them an opportunity to build cash reserves to a more comfortable level, so that our community is not always on such thin ice in regards to our healthcare. Of course, I'm not precluding Mr. Patton from coming up and addressing that.
Before that, if I can address also a question to Bob again, Mr. Malone, sorry, about the cost of the election? That is, my understanding at the last meeting is the hospital, Taos Health Systems, somebody with...
With money?
With, there is paying for it. Taos County and the citizens of our community are not directly paying for it. Is that correct?
The resolution, the resolution doesn't provide for that one way or the other. It doesn't have a provision for providing who's paying for it, and so that's a decision that the commission would have to make separately from this resolution. Taos Health Systems, as I understood it from our last meeting, indicated that they would pay for it, but there's no contractual agreement with them at this point to that effect.
But since we have control of the funds coming in...
Right.
...it's certainly a part of the deal that they've already agreed to.
Exactly. That's the point that I'm making about the control of the funds. Any contract could say, a part of the contractual agreement is that you will reimburse us for the cost of running the election. Thank you.
And, Mr. Chairman, if I could just add one more thing. I attended the hospital task force meeting on Wednesday. The union representative said the hospital employees who are union members have not yet voted as to if they favor the mill levy, whether they are for or against it. And they did indicate that one of their concerns was, you know, let's be honest, they'd like to see hospital employees who've worked long and hard get some kind of a raise. So I just wanted to point out that though, maybe most of the money would go for maintenance, the clause does state it could go for operations, which could include pay raises for many staff there who work very hard at the hospital.
That's true. Thank you, Commissioner.
Mr. Patton, I'm sorry, you're going to be late for your 10 o'clock staff meeting.
I hope they'll understand. Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners, I'm Bill Patton. I am the current CEO, I still introduce myself as the new CEO at Taos Health Systems. I understand and openly acknowledge that my organization has not had the best track record over the last couple of years. I also want to be open and honest that I can't fix yesterday. My responsibility is taking the organization where it is today, positioning it for success and financial liability moving into the future. As we have had conversations with the county commission, with our union, with the community study group, we have tried to be as open and as transparent as we can be. We've provided requested information. We're number among the report cards with the information that the commission had identified an interest in seeing improvement on. We are making a difference as it relates to our financial performance. We've not seen the numbers for November yet, but we have reported positive numbers for five months in a row. You have to go back before 2010 to show a period in time where we have five consecutive months of a positive bottom line. We've had a profit of $344,000 against our budget, we're better than $580,000, better than budget. We have tried to clearly document the need. We have a backlog of somewhere between $10 and $12 million in capital equipment and/or deferred building maintenance that needs to be addressed. While this proposal wouldn't deal with all of those issues, it would certainly put us in a position where we could prioritize and make a huge dent in that need. There is a difference of opinion as to how the funds should be used. That was discussed at the meeting on Wednesday evening. I will be asking the board at their meeting on Wednesday to specify that these dollars will be used for capital equipment and building maintenance. It's my opinion that that is the cleanest way to use the money. At the same time, I've already openly made the commitment that we do need to address employee compensation, and that is a key element in the strategic plan that we'll be presenting to the board Wednesday evening as well. So I don't see this as an either or, I see this as an and, that I need to fix employee compensation in this next budget year, and I need to find a way that we can fund this backlog of capital equipment and building maintenance. I personally am committed to providing you with the information that you need in order to show the community that the funds are being used wisely. I have gone on record as saying that I believe that this should be a one mil, by statute, we could go up to 4.25, but that this should be a one mil, and as Mr. Blackman R. said, for the minimum for four years, so that we can demonstrate that we can establish trust that the money we are asking for is being used wisely. One last comment, and then I may have to answer any questions. So often when it comes to health care policy, on a local level, we feel like we don't have any control. When the Affordable Care Act was being discussed in Washington, individual citizens didn't have a voice. When the state establishes policy that affects how we are paid, we often don't have a voice. This is an opportunity when local citizens can have a voice into the level of health care that will be received, and holding us accountable for the quality of that health care. This, I think, is a very important point in time for people to step forward and say, "This is what we want our health care organization to be." I have openly stated that we are not going to threaten that the hospital is going to close. We will find a way to keep the organization open, but the community needs to understand that there are services that we have right now that are not profitable, that we will have to reprioritize. So the organization as it exists today, and how it would be into the future, could look very different. So I don't want anyone to feel like we're threatening that the hospital is going to close. It will not. But some of the services that we provide, some of the services that I believe are essential to this community, will need to be curtailed or closed. So I just wanted to clarify that point, and with that, I may have to answer any questions.
Commissioner Fendell.
Thank you, Mr. Patton. I agree probably that the employees do need raises, but I'm afraid since this is a four year deal, and raises are recurring costs, are they going to go away in four years? That would be more detrimental, I think, to morale, which you've worked very hard to improve in your short time here. And I think that if this was based on that, but I'm hoping that you would, because of this, is going to alleviate some other issues on your current, what Steve does for you, I don't see him here, but...
He apologizes for not being here. He's, the responsibility is...
He's going to work some things to where you're not going to take those raises back in four years, because I think that would be more detrimental to giving than not giving.
I agree. I don't view this as a one-time fix. We need to be competitive with our compensation and benefits package on an ongoing basis. The way that we have this referenced in our strategic plan is that we need to have a robust recruitment and retention strategy, part of which is fixing the current employee compensation program. But this is not something that we can fix today and think that we can undo it tomorrow. In order for us to retain our employees, we have to have competitive compensation on an ongoing basis.
And this would take the place of certain things that you have already budgeted over the years, so I can see that then you move from capital, that money into your compensation plan, and that frees up the money to further take care of your employees.
And this is a conversation I've had with the union, clarifying that we budget between 1.2 and 1.6 million typically a year on capital equipment. And so the thought would be, well, then we could shift that money into operations, into pay raises. But I need to be clear, we don't spend 1.2, 1.6, because we don't have it. So I'll make up a number, if we're spending half a million currently on capital, I still expect that in addition to the funds that we would have from this mill, that we will have to budget some capital on our own. But you are correct in that it will provide a degree of relief within the budget, so that we can address other issues. At the end of the day, my job is to find a way to balance all those competing needs, so that we can satisfy the competitive pay that we need to have, and we can find a way to fund the brick and mortar issues that need to be addressed.
And to provide the services that our citizens need.
Yes.
I keep harping on, sorry to people to bring that up, but that's very important.
And I would suggest, and the strategic plan includes this, there are services we currently don't provide that we should be looking at. Wednesday night, we talked about emergency rehab. That's a program that I believe we should be offering here. We need to figure out a way to make that happen.
The oncology you talked about...
Yes, partnering with the oncologists.
People are going to say, "I hate it," you know, all for that, keep people off the road, let them stay here with their families, to recuperate.
Yes.
I think it's another important point, that, you know, it's not, as Ms. Miller suggested, a threat, that this is, either do this or we close our hospital. It's allowing the public to determine the level of care that they want in Taos County.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Donald.
Mr. Patton, I think if anyone can turn the hospital around, I think it's you. So I'm beginning to have trust. I think you're the man, especially when you leave Quorum. Thank you so much.
And, of course, we don't have a vote yet from the union, but I would be willing to bet that if this passes, the union would be a big supporter of the campaign.
Well, with the explanation Mr. Patton just gave, it pretty much addresses that issue, I would think.
Commissioners, anything further from the board here?
I just have one question of, like, clarified. Is this the first time, are we setting a thing where a private entity could pay for a public election in Taos? If THS was to pay for that, is that getting on some track, or as opposed to having it at the same time as another election? Historically, has that ever happened before?
I think it's just the funding from the revenues of the tax that end up paying for the election, which is probably quite common, although I don't know for sure. All right. Mr. Hall, you would like to come up and in, please, don't filibuster.
I don't feel that I ever filibustered, even like, or ever. The comment's been made, and I agree with Mr. Patton, and I agree with Ms. Donald's comments that the hospital is presently under hands, which does not, as far as I'm concerned, mitigate the need. concerned, mitigate the need to have them ask elsewhere first. The comment was made by Mr. Patton that this is a chance for the community to participate in its side on its health care needs. The community's had that opportunity before in terms of the community health needs assessment, which is done by the hospital. So, but I don't think it's done well. So the idea that without this, without this funding mechanism, and which would then incorporate and allow community input, the community couldn't have any say or it would have less of a say. That's, I don't believe that to be true, and I know it not to be true. And I want this community to very much be involved in the kind of health care that is provided. And whether it's cardiac rehab, whether it's oncology, or whether it's what I believe to be even more important, which is primary care, which is dealing with newborns, which is easing their way into this world and easing the way out of this world for the elderly, and then all of the primary care needs in between, that to me is the primary focus. And that focus needs to be based on the CMS designations. Community, the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services has designated this area as a health professional shortage area, a medically underserved area, and medically underserved population. And these are based, these designations are based MUA and MUP on income levels. And what it is, what they are, they are a recognition of the fact that this area suffers from extreme poverty. And you need to meet the needs, you as a body, they as a hospital, they as an organization, need to meet the needs of those people who are financially challenged in this community. As far as I'm concerned, everybody in this community, in every community everywhere, needs to have access to universal health care. Single way, but that's it. And to the extent that this community can come as close as possible to that model, that's the only, the only, as far as I'm concerned, the only way in which to measure success. Thank you.
Agreed. Thanks, Mr. Hall.
If I may respond, a little bit more information.
Just don't filibuster.
I, so we had approached the local banks regarding forms of support. When we were preparing for the conversion from ICD-9 to ICD-10, ICD codes, International Classification of Diseases, the United States, October 1, switched to ICD-10. We were expecting an interruption in our cash flow. And so we approached the local banks to see if we could get a line of credit that would allow us to weather whatever bumps we might have as far as cash flow. We were turned down twice because our financial position is such that we cannot take on debt in such a way that we're deemed worthy of paying it back. So as it relates to approaching the private market, we already have done that. We agree that primary care is an essential issue for this community. That also is an element in the strategic plan, but we're not waiting until the strategic plan is approved to take action on it. Just yesterday, I sent a note to Family Practice Associates indicating our willingness to support them in their recruitment efforts. They have a physician from Colorado, that they're this close to signing, and if they could get a little bit of help in relocation money, then they might be able to tip the balance. And so in addition to looking at how we would expand primary care ourselves, we are actively working with the other private clinics in town to address that issue. So I just thought that might be useful additional information for you.
Recruitment of doctors is a critical need in Towesco County, and it's a lot easier to recruit if you're financially healthy than not.
Just make sure you carry our new insurance awards, which seem to also be yours.
Well, if there are no other comments, questions, or discussion on this issue, I will make a motion that we approve the resolution. Second. Please call for the vote.
Vice Chair Fambro.
Yes.
Commissioner Gagos.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
No.
Chairman Blankenhardt.
Yes. Thank you very much, everybody, for participating in this, and we'll move on to the citizens' concerns. Kenny.
Good morning. Kenny, I was on the tax protest board a couple weeks ago and was impressed at the appraisers' professionalism and knowledge. They all provide very calculated information with pictures and documented evidence. The county has trained many employees to be appraisers, going to Sycor five days once a year at $600 plus food and lodging, more thorough training in-house for at least 34 months, for one to get comfortable in that position and go through a series of courses by the National Association of Assessors to get certified. The county has lost about 12, but really 20, appraisers in four years. One to Boulder, Colorado, for twice the pay after you trained him. One went on his own and making good living, self-employed. The job is stressful and difficult, and the county uses them to other departments, or they leave as the pay is minimal for what the challenges they have in making millions of dollar decisions on $11.50 an hour. I'm sure most calls or complaints about taxes being too high and have to answer questions from these unsatisfied customers. I also hear people calling to say, "Hey, thanks, I'm happy with my tax bill." You have eight appraisers, I believe. McDonald's pays $8.25 per hour. Walmart's base pay is $9.65 an hour, and average pay at Walmart is $13 per hour. I'm concerned as the county uses all the time it takes to get new employees trained, besides the staff, it takes their time away from their daily duties to train new recruits. I am of the understanding employees leave this department to go to other departments in the county administration, and no one gets transferred to this department. Why do you think? I'm concerned at this time you may lose a good employee or employees such as Erica Badaka, who is an excellent appraiser. I encourage you to look at this department and review all total costs to see if it makes sense to keep hiring, spending a large amount of taxpayers' monies in training, to lose approximately three appraisers, three years, actually more. Thus, it makes better sense to me to pay them more and keep them. I saw significant tax hikes at the hearings a few weeks ago, and as a realtor, when we get tax estimates on new sales, we see high increases of taxes. There seems to be quite a lot more tax monies coming into the county, so perhaps can afford better salaries to keep our well-trained people. I have copies for each one of you and these other people that have left your office, the county has sent her to office. Twenty of them, 21 of them, Erica might leave Friday, and she's really excellent in all the training and all the costs that you have put into it. I hope that you can check this out. I'm not savvy into the inner, you know, being workings of the administration, but I have my copy of my presentation, and I need to one of the appraisers that you have lost, 21 in four years.
Thank you, Penny. We are proud of our assessors department and all of our employees there. Lando, can you address that?
Thank you, Mr. Lando for complimenting our great staff in our assessors office. We agree that they are hardworking and they do get trained very well, and that does cost money. What you brought up today is something that the county is well aware of, you heard it from the hospital as well. I think overall Towes has an overpaid scale for people, and it is unfortunate because the people we have are as good or not better than anywhere else in the state. So we are working at the county level right now on a comp plan and job description plan that will hopefully identify the right place they need to be. And then the next step is finding that one, but the county is on the right track, though. We have a balanced budget this year for the first time in many years. Prior to that, we weren't even really allowed, or we probably would have gotten some pushback from DFA to try and give raises without a balanced budget. So we're in the right track. We're moving in that direction. You're right, tax revenues are coming in higher, which is helpful, and it is a priority of the management and the commission to compensate not just our assessors, but our entire county. We have the same problem with our sheriff's department. We have the same problem probably throughout county, solid waste, public works, and it's an issue that we need to look at comprehensively, and we are. And our hope is that if we can start working on it through mid-year, we will. If not, the new budget cycle will certainly take as much out of it as we can. It's going to cost a lot of money to do what we need to do to get everybody to the right place, and so we're working to find that and to be able to implement that.
I haven't put the figures together, but if I had more information, I'd be able to see how much money you are losing by training all these people and all the time. So you actually, I think, would be losing a lot more money than you are paying. And to look for it, it's right there because you're getting a lot of monies in from taxes, as I see. So that, and I just know that department, maybe a little sheriff's department, I wouldn't mind going into that one myself just to find out, but I definitely agree that the sheriff's department needs more money, the deputies. So I would vote for that. So can I leave this with you? Thanks.
And thank you for bringing that up, the training. As the previous finance director, I did kind of add up the cost of the training, and it is an expensive way to boost people, and training them up for other entities to take advantage of is not best practice. And that is why we're taking this approach, and we do feel it is necessary to take care of our Towes County employees. They treat our constituents very well, and I'm always proud to see constituents walk out here with a smile because the staff treated them with the respect they deserve, and they should be compensated. So we are working on it, and thank you for bringing it up.
Thank you. Regarding the sheriff's department, and my son was a county deputy here, started at, I think, $13 an hour. And he went to Los Alamos, started at $20 an hour, became sergeant, lieutenant, commander, and now he's deputy chief, and he gets over $100,000 an hour. It just doesn't make sense, and we have a great community here, to keep good people here also. Thank you.
Thank you, Penny. We are a bit of a competitive disadvantage with Los Alamos and Santa Fe, and it's, you know, it's hard for us to be in a poor community, but as Mr. Cordova said, we are working on it.
Just better, hey, thanks.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to address the board at this time? If not, we'll move on to approval of the November 10 minutes special meeting, commissioners? How about ahead of the motion to approve those minutes? Second. Please call for the vote.
Vice Chair Fambro.
Yes.
Commissioner Gagos.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Chairman Blankenhardt.
Yes. Under item seven, this is a public hearing, and it is in regards to a decision for approval of a...
We did that.
Oh, we did this on the hour we got that.
To catch up, we're on 9C, I think.
We got that on Tuesday. Thank you, Jim.
Oh, the D.
9D?
D.
9D.
C.
Oh, yeah, DC was eliminated.
Okay.
Great, we crossed out C, and so now we are on 9D, which is a discussion and decision regarding the approval of a grant agreement for the purchase and equipment vehicles to install communications radios and equipment for the Towes County Sheriff's Department. This one, I'll tell you every morning.
Good morning, Commissioner. Yeah, I'm on, well, I guess I should say it the other way. Before you is the grant agreement from the state of New Mexico, the Department of Finance, to acknowledge and agree to the terms and conditions for the capital appropriation project And as Chairman mentioned, it's to purchase equipped vehicles and install communication radios and equipment for the county sheriff's department. The appropriation is for $125,000. The revision date is June 30 of 2018. I recommend approval and stand for questions.
Motion to approve.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Any discussion or questions? If not, call for the vote.
Vice Chair Fambro.
Yes.
Commissioner Gagos.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Chairman Blankenhardt.
Yes, thank you for your work on that.
Thank you.
And you're still up here on 9E, which is a discussion and decision for another grant agreement, and this is for the purchase of equipment for vehicles.
Yes. So before you is second grant agreement from the state of New Mexico Department of Finance for acknowledgement and to agree to the terms and conditions. It's the capital appropriation project 150872, and it's to purchase equipped vehicles for Towes County, and that's an appropriation of $90,000.
Will you pardon it?
I'm actually not sure about this agreement.
Mr. Chairman, yes, it would be easier if public works, there's so many equipment needs again.
And that revision date is June 30 of 2018.
Motion to approve.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Call for the vote.
Vice Chair Fambro.
Yes.
Commissioner Gagos.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Chairman Blankenhardt.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you. On the radio equipment for the police vehicles, does that tie into the new CAD system? Is that, is that part of what makes the new CAD system more effective?
Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure this specific radio equipment is for that. I think it's just just typical radios to keep our communications, and the language is just to be able to completely equip a new sheriff's vehicle from front to back. We can say that.
Like, or it's mobile repeaters and things of that sort.
But none of that investment is going to have to be replaced in the near future to get up with?
No, it actually, I think, is the first step, if it's the mobile repeater system like the state, I believe that's what the sheriff told me in a conversation.
Yes, and the sheriff does not want to waste anybody either. He is trying to be aggressive and get ready for the rollout of our...
I'm sure. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's see. We did the memorandum of understanding last time between the town and, oh, no, this is on the committee, I'm sorry. So this is a discussion and decision on the approval of memorandum of understanding in connection with the administration of grants for the improvement of Reno del Medio. Mr. Moore.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, this memorandum of understanding was made necessary by the Department of Transportation. They, in order to effectuate what had been agreed to between the town and the county, which is that the $130,000 grant and the additional $30,000 grant be expended for engineering work that was being done by the town, Department of Transportation wanted an MOU between the town and the county indicating that that was what was to be done, and that's the purpose of this MOU. It allows the town to receive the funds directly from the Department of Transportation and requires the town to fulfill our obligations under the grant.
Thank you, Bob. Commissioner Fambro.
We did attend a meeting regarding the 30% progress on this. We did not attend the town hall meeting on that, but nonetheless, it went through. So we know that we're getting progress on this. I can certainly help brief any of the other elected officials on where we're standing on this, but at this time, I think this needs to happen, so I make motion to approve.
I'll go with the second, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I just need to be real quick. I will give a brief update on that need in my management report for the commissions. Thank you. We have a motion on the table and a second. Please call for the vote.
Vice Chair Fambro.
Yes.
Commissioner Gagos.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Bell.
Yes.
Chairman Blankenhardt.
Yes.
So we've dealt with item 10K, so we will move on to 11. This is department matters, and under A, we have a discussion regarding Don Yama Drive survey. Mr. Earl Sellador, another cluster.
My name is the chairman, commissioners. Don Yama survey, we've got a couple of issues on a piece of property that the surveyor could not find any people that owned it. So we found the first part. I think we got permission from the landowners to go ahead. They're going to give us a right of easement on it. But the one that we don't have any paperwork on, we're going to recommend that we do a title search. And looking through a title company, it costs anywhere from $250 starting, and if there was any complications, it could go to $1,000. Or we could take it upon ourselves to adopt it, and hopefully later on, nobody would come and claim a piece of land. But I would think that the best area is to do a title search on it so we could be safe knowing that whose property it is.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Earl, if you could explain to us, there's two labels there, item A and item B.
Yeah, okay, A is the one that the property owners will give us the eastman on. B is the one that we don't have a title for. B is the one that we don't have a title for, that is kind of like a normal sand.
Is that the actual road surface at this point, or?
Some part of it is, yeah.
How much of it?
It's, I think it's seventeen feet right down the middle of this actual road. It's the kind of like the two small dotted lines that are in there.
Okay, and then with relation to this survey, where is the town and Taos limits? Up to what point do they maintain this road?
It's right at the end of, let's see.
You got it upside down, it's at the north end. Mr. Chairman, just to help Earl out, at the very north end, the surveyor surveyed the proposed area to be adopted, and at the very northern part of this platte that you have, there's a small line there that's about an inch at the very top. That's where the town limits are.
So it's part of that B area within the town and Taos?
No, it's after, kind of past that.
Okay.
And all of this is in preparation for assigning road viewers?
Correct. Mr. Chairman, if I can say, most of the users are within the county areas, which is in District Three. And what they would like to see is this turn, this, it's kind of like a dogleg area, improved. Usually when it snows, or it rains, or there's a lot of mud, or the road needs grading, the town and Taos will make those improvements or clean snow just up to the point where the town and Taos limits end, and they leave the rest of it just as an area to turn their equipment, right?
Right, exactly. Whatever with the public that I met with is that they push all the snow and then kind of just leave it there on the dirt part, and they still make a turnaround there to turn around and leave. But in talking with Branch, we could collaborate in him or us coming in and cleaning the whole road on both sides, because we have a couple of areas that are like this half-town, half-city. So he could like take care of one area, and we'll take care of another area, and that way we clean all the way through, and he cleans all the way through, and we make sure we keep it passable for the residents.
And right now, we can't do anything because it's not ours?
Although in the past, the county has maintained some of this, or most of it. In the last few years, the county hasn't, but at one point, the county did go in and do grading and maintaining of the road. The idea now is to put it permanently on a maintained county roads list.
Mr. Chairman, who paid for the survey?
Uh, the county did.
And how much did that cost?
Uh, I don't remember. I'll have to give back the deal.
Would you give back? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Earl, thanks for being here today. That title search, how long do you think that'll?
I'm not sure about that either.
I'm sure.
All right.
Mr. Chairman?
It smells gonna fly soon, one of these days maybe.
Mr. Chairman, based on my experience on title searches, this takes about a month or so to get done.
And then you, and then we send out the road viewers, and then we bring it back here for our final decision?
Right.
And so this was prompted by a petition by the people who live on the road.
Right.
So whenever we get a petition, a fifty-one percent petition, then we are obligated to, I'm not saying this is bad, I mean, just kind of, we sort of evolve the process, so then we become obligated to incur certain expenses just by virtue of having a petition before we even make up our minds. This one seems like a pretty easy call, but it's just for the future, that's, I think that's the way we're working now.
Right.
Well, the steps that we've gone through, and I'm not sure exactly how the steps were followed in this case, but the steps that we normally go through are if the petition meets the requirements, then the commission has to send road viewers. If the road viewers make a positive recommendation, then the survey has to be done, because the statute requires that before the commission can act to adopt the road, there has to be filed with the clerk, the road viewers' report, and a survey. So if we got a road viewers' report that we couldn't yet act upon, but we didn't feel like we were going to react positively because we forego the survey costs? I have to think that one through.
Okay.
Then that's it. I don't want to give you that one off the top of my head.
Mr. Chairman, with regards to the survey costs, I believe some members of the neighborhood, some of these properties that are attached to the road did incur some expenses themselves. I know that they have vested interest in it with regards to them contributing to the cost, but I believe some of them did. I'm not sure if Leandro or Mr. Malone can confirm that.
I wasn't involved in acquiring the survey, so I can't speak to that.
Okay.
I mean, Mr. Chairman, I don't know, I can't speak for the individuals. I know that Taos County paid over two thousand dollars for our hard effort survey.
Yeah.
Well, so we did do our part, and I'm not sure about the private owners.
Because that's the way we've done it in the past. I think all of the roads that we have adopted in the past couple of years, maybe three of them, we've gotten contributions from the people who live on the roads to cover the survey. Bob? Different kinds of contributions. In some cases, they paid entirely for the survey. That was Trace Womas. In the case of Santi Stavon, they agreed to pay for the culverts. They didn't participate in paying for the survey. So it's varied, but that's something that this commission has taken into account, the contribution that the private owners have been willing to make.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Nick Runciao, who was a resident of that area, luckily just walked in now, and I'd like for him to do a bit of a presentation as to why this road needs to be incorporated into the county road maintained list.
Certainly. Thank you so much. Sorry I'm late. Been under the weather. But anyway, about a year and a half ago, I presented to you about the need of maintaining that road. We're not asking much. It's about three hundred feet, I believe, our survey, three hundred feet from the end of the pavement up to where it forks off to different neighborhoods. We've tried a couple of times to see if we could get the neighbors involved, to see if they could pitch in to get some money to maintain that road. It just can't, you know, it's a financial burden. It's a lot of senior citizens that live there, and handicapped people that live there, and for one person to do it by yourself, it's kind of expensive. Like I say, it's only three hundred feet that we need maintained. I don't, I can't even remember the last time it was done. I believe Commissioner Ometo, I believe it was you that set cleaning up there, grader up there to clean that road for us. But it's pretty bad. It's bad in the wintertime, you know, it turns into mud. When the, when the snow melts, there's a runoff that goes right through the middle of the road. A neighbor, one of our neighbors, twice ruined her, the oil pan, twice in her car, and we swerved from one side of the road to the other, trying to avoid the holes in the, on the road. So it's pretty bad. I'm sure you've seen it, Commissioner Ometo, and so has Earl. We've met a number of times. I really appreciate everything you folks have done up to now. Thank you so much. We all appreciate it. We keep in touch with Earl and with Commissioner Ometo all the time. I keep in touch, you know, I communicate with my neighbors all the time, as to the progress that's been going on. And thank you so much for the survey that you, that you did on our road. And I talked to Mr. Tamara this morning. I believe he talked to you about, about okaying that. And Ruben Ometo, my neighbor here, that's Andy Ometo's father, that I believe, so he knows for those wonders are. Thank you so much for everything you've done up to now, and I appreciate anything you can do to continue this project through and see it through. Hope we don't have to have another winter without that road being repaired.
Mr. Sir, thank you, Mr. Runciao.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Malone, what is, what are your thoughts as to how we should proceed?
It would be the wise thing to do to have the title report, so that we don't get surprised later on to find that somebody does have a claim ownership to that, what's marked as B on your platte. And then, once we have that, the road viewers' report and the survey platte can be filed, can come back to the county commission ten days after it's filed with the county clerk. That would be my recommendation.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Malone. With that, Mr. Chairman, I'll move and move forward with this particular road project acquisition of the area.
It's just a discussion item at this point, Commissioner. We will obviously go on it when the report comes back, as Mr. Malone stated, so I'm optimistic we'll be able to get this done, and thank you.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Chairman, can we have it on the next agenda?
I guess it depends on what time it's worth that has to be done.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Ometo, I think we are going to wait until the final title search before we bring it to you, just so that we do eliminate any future possible questions.
And just to be clear on the timeline, there's however much time it takes for the title search to happen, and then the road viewers' report and the survey would have to be filed with the clerk ten days before the meeting, so we couldn't make the next meeting, I don't think, in a realistic schedule.
Mr. Chairman, at what point should the road viewers be assigned, a selection of road viewers? Have we done that?
Uh, we've already been out there with the road viewers, so we already have that in place.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much, Earl.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Eleven B, this is a discussion and decision regarding the reprocess and procedures for neighborhood overlay zoning applications. Nathan Sanchez, chief planner, good morning, Nathan.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. Corvall, Mr. Malone, Madam Clerk, and the public. First, I would like to update you on the work session that county staff had Monday night with the neighborhood association, updating them on ordinance two thousand fifteen dash zero two, which are the land use regulations, the neighborhood zone overlay application, the public meeting, and public hearing process. Mr. Chairman, Black and Horn attended, and there were five neighborhoods presented, represented. They were Upper Las Colonia, Stagecoach, West Mesa, Las Colonia, Lower Desmontes, and Rochester Taos. These would probably be the first neighborhoods to come forward with the neighborhood overlay zone application. The neighborhoods were informed of the review process by the neighborhood's planning staff and the legal department. We also let them know that the application for the neighborhood overlay will hopefully be the planning department. Therefore, Taos County will be responsible for the publication of legal notices for the two public hearings that are required. The first hearing is before the planning commission, whom will give a recommendation on the neighborhood overlay application, and the second hearing will be before the board of commissioners, who will give a final decision on the neighborhood overlay application. The work session was very productive, in which county staff will work with the legal department to finalize the application, and that can address some of the questions that were brought up concerning ordinance two thousand fifteen dash six two, which are the land use regulations. Just to go over the neighborhood zone overlay application that was in your packet, the first section of the application provides information about the neighborhood association. The neighborhood must submit information concerning their resolution of recognition, board members, tenants, and bylaws. They must also provide a written description of the jurisdictional boundary, maps, and existing property over within the jurisdiction. The planning staff will assist in all those submissions. They also have to contain affidavit that affirming the information on the application. The neighborhood overlay, the neighborhood zone overlay template is the next section of the application, and this contains three sections. Section one establishes the boundaries, purpose, and constraint. Section two establishes the zone overlay designations, which are residential, agriculture, sustainable community purpose, commercial, light commercial, historic, village, highway corridor, and existing resort. Section three establishes the matrix that describes a level of primary review and non-permitted land uses within certain zones. They are classified as Z, which is a zoning permit, zoning clearance permit. A is an administrative permit. S is a special use permit or major development permit. All uses that meet the criteria of a major development shall require a major development permit. The matrix identifies on one side the residential uses, commercial or nonprofit land uses. The middle section of the matrix identifies zone designations described earlier, and the far section of the matrix allows for comments on limitations that can be imposed on the use. The center of the matrix is where the neighborhood will describe the permit review or non-commit for or non-permitted land uses. Section three identifies a limits table that contains the following: maximum parcel coverage, minimum commercial setbacks, minimum residential setbacks, minimum SECA setbacks, minimum water source streams, wind and springs setbacks, develop, grow slow, and maximum height. Section four is for the neighborhood development standards that must be more stringent than the development standards within the limits table. The decision that we need to date is that to allow the planning department to be the applicant on these neighborhood overlay zones in which the county will be, will incur the cost of publication and notice for public hearings. I still have some questions.
I got a question for Bob real quick. Well, Bob, you got something to say? Well, let me ask you just real quick, the planning, what's the level of notice required in front of the planning commission? When you said the level of notice required in front of the planning commission? Yeah, I mean, I know this statute only before we have a public, the notice for a public hearing before this board to decide whether or not we adopt the overlay, that has to be to individual landowners. We have to, we have to notice everybody. It was my impression that we did not have to do that for the hearing in front of the planning commission, which is not really a decision hearing, it's more of a work study hearing.
I'm going to need to review my top of the head, and I'll take a second to double check, and then, Land Use Code, my top of the head reaction is that the notice requirements for any public hearing are the same.
But if it's not a public hearing for a decision, the planning commission is...
What is a decision about whether to recommend or not?
Okay, well, if you could please check that, that's important, that'll double the cost of the publication fee.
Let me just, I checked what I wanted to check, and that's Article seven, seven point four point one, public notice. It doesn't draw a distinction between public hearings, applications, appeals, and hearings identifying Taos land use regulations that require public notice, so on and so forth. It's a general application.
But normally hearings don't require notice to every landowner. It's just that there's a, my understanding is that there's a state statute that requires notice to every landowner by mail if you are seeking a zoning change. notice to every landowner by mail if you are seeking a zoning change. The, the decision with regard to, um, the type of notice that's required is, again, I'm going to have to find, okay, amendments to the ordinance, and I see now what you're And even amendments to the ordinance, we do not notify every landowner by mail, we just do publication according to state law. Well, again, there is a case that tries to reconcile two conflicting provisions in the state statutes. One provision calls for, um, various types of individual notice depending upon the size of the parcel. The other provision allows for simply publication. If it is a, uh, the, the, the case that decided that point, Miles versus Board of County Commissioners of County Sandoval, reconciled those two provisions but didn't do it in a definitive way. Simply said, if you have a countywide, uh, change, a change that's applicable throughout the entire county, publication is sufficient. If you have a change that's only applicable to a small number of people, you have to do individual notice. Didn't say what happens if something falls in the middle. I would think that, um, a zoning, uh, a neighborhood zoning overlay or a county zoning overlay, either of those two would, um, fall under publication.
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 As opposed to individual notices?
As opposed to individual notices. But again, I wasn't really prepared for the detailed analysis on that. If you'd like me to take a moment and do that, I'll do it, but...
Well, we, we just have to know what the level of notice is, because we've got to decide who's paying for it, and, um, well, on that, on that point, that, that's, that's an issue that is reasonably clear to me, that the, we would, in order to change, but let me, let me answer that more broadly than a simple yes or no answer, because I need to do that. We're not getting many simple yes or no answers.
No.
Would you accept anything?
So, the, in the case of neighborhood zone overlays, it specifically says that it recognized Neighborhood Association is the only applicant, and so the planning department can't be the applicant in that case.
Well, we do have, this is going to be, this, this is going to be long, but we, we do have a portion of the, the land use regs that, that allows the county to bring forth an overlay.
That's a county zone overlay, correct.
So, you either redesignate, if, if you want the county instead of the individual landowners to pay for this, then you either redesignate the overlay as county overlay at some point, or you change Article seven point one to say that, uh, the applicant pays when it's an application for a permit, as opposed to for a amendment to the ordinance.
I, I agree that you could affect the result that you're trying to achieve in either of those two ways. I wouldn't specifically recommend changing it to an application for a permit, because there are other kinds of applications where you can still want the applicant to pay for notice, for example, an application for a variance. And it's not just a permit.
Okay, permit or variance.
Well, I, I, again, I don't want to go through the whole list, but there's a, there's a way that we could amend to, um, put the burden on the county of paying for notice in the case of neighborhood organizations. And it's correct that if it were characterized as a county zone overlay rather than a neighborhood zone overlay, that, uh, then the planning department can be the applicant.
You could also just have a sentence that said, uh, the applicant, except in cases of-
Exactly, which is what I would recommend.
Be the safest, then you don't have to rack and bring over every possible-
Exactly, exactly.
Every possible, uh, exception to that. So, uh, that may be something that we have to consider before we determine who's going to pay for the application, and it could be considered at the same time that the first zoning overlay was brought to us as an amendment, possibly. But the, the question still remains on the notice, and, um, you know, if, if it's your decision that, that we notify every landowner for the public hearing just to be safe, that's, I'm certainly not going to argue it, um, but I still have a question of whether or not that would even possibly be necessary under that case for the planning commission hearing itself. It, it seems to me there's nothing either in state law or our ordinance that requires such extensive notification for a, what really is a work study in front of the planning commission. But if you're not prepared to answer that today, obviously, that's fine.
Okay.
All right, so we're not, I don't know, we're probably not going to make the final decision on this question. Jim?
There's, there's no way that maybe a notice can explain the process, and I know we're dealing with a small card as well, the, the postcard, you know, to keep the cost down, so I understand that. Somebody to lay it out in this meeting, you know, which would be followed up by this, and that would serve as a notice and given them someplace. One of the things that we talked about, and, um, um, Lower Los Coles was posting it in different places that people are known to be, so we would emphasize that on the card as well. And maybe that would allow us only to do one mailing, laying out the process, and telling them where additional information will be available, um, at the Prado Post Office, just using the one in my district, um, the Prado Post Office, the bank out there, Cids, um, the places that are most frequented by those people, and, and maybe that would suffice the, and keep the cost down, because it's a big cost to us, it's a big cost to them, I, I get that. So, can we do a comprehensive one-time mailing? Bob?
I, I don't think that a single mailer, there are multiple variants, we could have it.
Never, huh?
But again, I, I really wasn't aware that the details of the type of notice that we're going to give are going to be addressed today, and I would be much more comfortable studying this now on the fly.
Okay, then you'll talk about it next week, is that okay?
Yep, that's okay, we're, we're just going to have to redo this one. But I do have one other question, and this for Nathan. So, you know, we've got Upper Los Colonia's that are getting pretty close, and they, you know, that's the thing, these neighborhoods, when they do this, it's got to go through like a hundred different uses and figure out what's appropriate and what's not. It's hours and hours of work, and, and, you know, I really appreciate their input and work, and, and I hate to bust their budget by charging them a thousand bucks a publication, but we're going to answer that one later. Anyhow, they've come up with one. I know that, that you and Edward have some disagreements with, with, with their proposal, which is good, you know, all well and good, part of the democracy thing, but, you know, there's a possibility that they're going to want to present theirs, and then you're going to present yours. Um, they may still say, well, we want to try to present our ideas to the planning commission, and we want to present our ideas to the board of county commissioners, and then the planning department can chime in and say, well, we like the plan, but we disagree here, and here, and here. I think that's the way it's, it's sort of evolving, and I wanted to get your impression of that.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, um, the way, um, we prefer we go, the process would go is that they submit their, uh, overlay zone to planning staff. We would review it, and we would also review it with legal, and some is policy, but some we would want legal, um, review on it. So, from that, we would prefer to create that document, because it is a county document, and it, it does come from the planning department. So, we prefer that, we would present the document as a proposal from the planning department.
All right, well, that would make the planning department the applicant, in effect.
But it, it doesn't address the important question that you just raised, Chairman, about suppose that the Neighborhood Association feels strongly about wanting it a particular way that the planning department disagrees with.
Correct.
They should be able to get that in front of the deciding bodies, the planning commission and the county commission.
Under the land use regulations, under the land use regulations that are under Article six, that does seem to be allowed, so, it, you know...
And if they did that, then it would be more difficult to characterize the, the planning department as the applicant.
Right, unless we put in that one sentence that said-
Exactly, exactly.
And, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, uh, well, it'd be like any application, uh, for, just like a special use, that consumers' application. We review the application, and then we give a recommendation based on the submitted that application, that the reading all the requirements of the ordinance. So, ours is just a recommendation based on what theirs, but at the public hearing, the applicant could oppose our recommendation and give their reasons, meaning why they want changes.
Mr. Chairman, how many neighborhoods are already at this point come before?
Um, not, they're, they're, um, how could I say, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Omero, um, there are, I guess, five neighborhoods. They're in the process of creating the neighborhood overlay zone, but, um, Upper Los Colonia's actually has a submitted ready to come forward. Uh, West Mesa, Lower Los Colonia's is getting those at Stagecoach.
Okay, they're five or close, and one is just about ready.
Where is Rancho's?
Uh, Rancho's, uh, where's, where, they're getting also close, but we're, they're, we're reviewing their boundary and stuff like that.
Commissioner Fambro.
And also, Nathan, in, in the wording, just make sure that if the county is the applicant, it does, what you just said is perfect, that it's driven by the application from the Neighborhood Association. That way it doesn't seem like certain parts of the county that do not want neighborhood overlays, we're not forcing them on us. So, make sure that you, you really emphasize that it's, it's driven from the bottom, I mean, you know, from them outside to the inside, not us going and saying, we're going to make a bigger association here, because that's, there's areas, especially in my district, that do not want any, any part of this, and because of the documents written the way it is, they don't have to.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Fambro, that is correct. Our, this whole process has been developed in that manner that the neighborhoods do not wish we're not going to enforce any type of zoning on neighborhood.
Well, no, there's no further discussion on this one, we do have further discussion on this one.
I just want to make a motion that we move to the next, that we, um, take Agenda Item eleven B and bring it up again at the next meeting to review process and procedures for individual neighborhood overlay zone application.
Thank you. I'll second that. Call for a vote.
Mr. Fambro.
Yes.
Commissioner Gagos.
Yes.
Commissioner Omero.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Chairman Blakenhart.
Yes. Thank you, Nathan. Item eleven C, this is a discussion decision, uh, to approve out of state travel for David Martinez, um, in his, uh, efforts to obtain his training, much needed, official training. Deandrea.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, um, the planning director, Eric Hill, was out this week on vacation. He had a lot of extra time he needed to take over before the end of the year, so, um, I'm presenting this today on his behalf. Um, we have heard about the plan, um, this is in relation to the chief building inspector. Um, Mr. Martinez is planning to attend three individual certified building official trainings starting in January, uh, January eleventh, January sixteenth, April eleventh, and June. Uh, we're asking for a blanket approval of out-of-state travel and actuals, uh, reversements for all three of these at this time, so that he can go ahead and get started in January, and, um, we won't have to keep coming back to you at this time.
Move for a vote, Mr. Chairman?
Second with a comment. Um, the testing procedure in this embrace, it, you know, it's pretty heavy duty, so I don't think that he's just going on a vacation. He's, he's, he's a pretty heavy-
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Fambro. I understand that he'll be in the training for about a week straight, and then take the test out of Saturday, and it's a long test, he's going to be in the test for a few hours, and so, yeah, absolutely no vacation, he'll probably be busier than he would likely to.
No. All right, we have a motion and a second on the table. Any further questions? If not, call for the vote.
Mr. Fambro.
Yes.
Commissioner Gagos.
Yes.
Commissioner Omero.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Chairman Blakenhart.
Yes. On to your report.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you. Um, just have a few items, kind of go through quickly if possible. Um, first, we had the opportunity yesterday, Commissioner O'Donnell, to have ownership of Representative Gonzalez. Uh, we were able to talk to him a little bit about the priorities that this commission had discussed. Uh, he seemed to be pretty supportive. Um, the historic county courthouse kind of looked easier, and I think that it may be a really good project, um, in terms of what our representative thinks. I do have a meeting scheduled next week with Senator Cisneros. Um, we'll do the same thing, just kind of prepare for what this commission has talked about, and the priorities that have been laid out, and, and just get us ready for our legislative session.
Is it, would it be helpful to have, uh, Gabe Cisneros available for that?
Um, he's always available, I mean, I think, I'm sure I could invite him, he'd be more than happy to attend, too. So, if that's the way, I would, I'd be more than happy to do that.
Yes.
Just keep coming in all. Okay. So, um, the next thing I'll go over is, um, Distillment Software that our nine-one-one department has been working on so diligently for the last, oh, it seems like year, maybe two years. Uh, we are planning to roll that out December eighteenth, I mean, December eighth, which is next week. Uh, do want to thank our nine-one-one director, Dominique Martinez, for all the hard work and all of the training that they've coordinated. Thank the sheriff's department for participating, and detention for participating. It's been a long process, and we're all kind of crossing our fingers, holding our breath, and saying a little prayer that December eighth, we roll out everything great, and we have no problem. I do believe we are prepared for that, and we should have a smooth rollout of Distillment Software. Just wanted to update you on that, and let you know that that's continuing. Next week is the date. Um, today is the deadline on our RFP that has been released for, um, agencies, requests, nonprofits. Uh, that, that RFP had been out for about a month. Uh, in checking with our purchasing officer this morning, we've had about four responses so far. We have till the end of the day, we may receive a few more. I also want to let the commission know that the Indigen RFP is out. That was published in this week's Taus News, and it will be out for the next thirty days. And so, you know, please, any interested organizations that you are aware of, please let them know it is on our website, they can access it, and we are looking forward to proposals. Uh, another item, the veterans are working hard clearing the chamiso at the cemetery. They, um, they are feeling blessed by the weather. I know some of us would like to see some snow, I think they were kind of, it worked out well, they didn't have the snow, and were able to get this job done, and they're working on that. Um, and we appreciate it. We do thank them, and we thank the coordinated efforts of the veterans, and they sure do come together and mobilize, and it's, it's kind of cool to see, so, update on that. We do have our joint meeting with the town plan for December eighth. Uh, we have a draft agenda that we are going over, kind of working out a few, um, details on now, and should be released this afternoon. Um, so we hope to see as many of you as possible at December eighth. They will be at the town, they're hosting this time, so it will be at the town's chambers way, um, so, at nine AM. Uh, Camino de Medio, um, as Commissioner Fambro mentioned, we did have an engineering meeting, uh, to go over about thirty percent mark. We did that on Tuesday afternoon, one o'clock, with all the partners, so the Soder Miller, um, Alex Avita, who is working as a consultant for Soder Miller, uh, the town of Taus, and Taus County, who are represented. Commissioner Fambro was able to be there for a few minutes. Um, Mr. Salazar, Mr. Haromio, myself, attended. It's great, I think it's a great project, I'm, I'm very excited. Leaving that meeting was exciting to see how much progress we made, and the type of design and effort that's going into this kind of county and town collaborated project. Um, I think everyone will be pleased with the end result. There is improvements, lots of improvements to the road, improvements to shoulders, improvements to radaway drainage-
Bypass.
Bypass. Um, a lot of what has been requested is in there, almost everything that we could get was in there. So, we do, are, so we are on the same page, it does, the design does begin just north of the intersection at the state highway, uh, Palmer older intersection. That was brought up to us, there was a couple conceptual ideas from the engineer, but it's a, a big project in itself, and that will be a future extension of this- a, a big project in itself, and that will be a future extension of this project. Um, it will probably require a lot of engineering of its own, but they do already have some ideas, um, in extension of what we're.
And we asked for pictures, I'll get those to you. We've, they're on the board for us, and we will have those to show you, Commissioner, that work out of numerous times. And fortunately, the land acquisition that's going to be required to pull that off, but, um, they've got two really good ideas.
So on that note, and speaking of land acquisition, it looks like, um, it was a 30% meeting, but the truth is they're further on. Um, they call it a 30% meeting because that was the point where they bring the input from the public, and they did have that public meeting Tuesday afternoon. I was a little upset that we didn't have more notice to give to the commissioners and to, for you to be able to give to your constituents. Uh, we did not know about that meeting until we sat down for the engineering meeting that afternoon, so, um, they did have the meeting that evening, and I do believe it went pretty well. Um, and a lot of the neighbors, a lot of the landowners that are gonna be effective have been in the process all along. The engineers have done a really good job of reaching out to everyone along the path, talking to them about what we're trying to do and what we're trying to accomplish. On the county side of things, it looks like our biggest need for acquisition and easement will be around the Chaviza intersection. But there is a new landowner that is very well aware of what we're trying to accomplish and seems to be on board.
And she accepts the conceptual drawing that was provided to her as landowner, so she didn't at first, but they, they, Alex and Amos Bakhter met with her, and it seems that she's actually pretty excited about it now.
I'm glad to hear that, because, and that has been you.
You got them and I got them, then.
The, the previous owners would have been totally against that idea of any expansion or, uh, improvements to the overlay.
And I brought up that seven tenths that's in your district that spills into mine, Commissioner, and at some point we need to negotiate with the town on, on just completing the rest of that time. I mean, the rest of that road to, to, to theirs, it would make sense. So, at, at some point in this process, we're going to definitely talk to them about that.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, I mean, like I said, excited, very positive. I think we're really moving well on this project. We get to the next stage, though, which is identifying all the acquisition requirements and right-of-way needs, and then going out and getting it. And that's where things can potentially get bogged down a little bit. I have a lot of questions for the engineers on that process and, and the time it would take. And it looks like at this point it may be prudent for the county to put in a little bit of our funds, get a little skin in the game, and be able to go and acquire those acquisitions with our time, so that when we are ready to go ask for the full amount, which at this time is looking about $3 million. It's, it's a great project, but it's not gonna be a cheap project. We certainly are gonna have to pay to be able to find the result that we, we want. So, um, I don't wanna say it's not a top priority, in fact, I think it certainly is one of our top priorities because of the work that has been put into it and how far we've come. Um, in terms of funding this year in the CBPG cycle, in terms of legislative requests, we may be a little bit ahead of ourselves. We did talk to Representative Gonzalez about this as well, and sit, and reaffirm that it's certainly a top priority for the county. Um, however, we may not ask for all that money this year, but we certainly are gonna come back and ask for the money. We would, we would like to have a very complete shovel-ready with rightaways available, so that when we do ask, we can do our best to maybe grant our $500,000 from each entity of CBPG a million, and then ask for the rest from state funds and not just our legislation.
Do, do you have any idea how much the land acquisition cost will be in 2016?
Unfortunately, we don't have that yet. That is the next step. So after the public meeting, um, they said that that will be the next thing they will roll out, will be the map of what is out there, the, what they need to give and take.
So, because, so if we're gonna do that out of our own budget, then cannot ask for any money, it has to be an amount that we can afford, that's all I'm saying.
Yes.
But, uh, Commissioner Fambro.
One of those guys. The other thing that we kind of skipped over is there was five different Tosekiev that were, that are involved in this project, and they already have agreements and buy-in from all of those. In fact, two of them, they're making things a lot better and fixing age-old problems on two of them, but all five are in complete agreement with what has been presented by Mr. Baikdan and Mr. Hanler.
And, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, um, it turns out that a lot of easement that is needed is property that is actually owned by the Town and Towns. And I heard from Mr. Bellis yesterday evening that they actually got, uh, they've, with, in collaboration with the Lord Foundation, have obtained even more property adjacent to Fredbacher Park, which will make the project even easier. And so we do have a lot of buy-in on both sides. The county side of things, there isn't a lot of acquisition and, and that we're gonna really need to obtain. I, I don't know exactly what the number is, but I'm confident it's not gonna be something that we can't put out there, and it will be part of next year's budget, so it'll be something we'll see as we get into the budget cycle, and we'll have a better number, I hope.
Chairman, I'm glad to hear that Alex Avita is involved in this project, because he has certainly gained a lot of experience with the bios, Rancho's, and land acquisition, and having to deal with the, uh, public on, on all the needs that are going to be involved with this particular road project. Um, how far north does, does it go? Does it even go all the way past the Friday Motor, uh?
Yes.
Residents, the owners of Friday Motors?
It's gonna go right there, and that's, that's, that's a big. Our, our, our land acquisition, I think, was estimated like a tenth or less of what theirs is. We're really, um, minimal, but, yeah, it goes all the way to that intersection, the outside conceptual drawings of what that alignment with, um, I can't remember.
Carver Hall.
Carver Call. And so they have that, but that's also a future project, because that's a big land acquisition to pull that one off.
That kind of brings us back to our legislative priorities a little bit, and CBPG, since Medio, uh, we're not going to be able to act on that this year, we're gonna focus on the land acquisition. Sounds like a great plan. Really, we shovel-ready for 2017. Uh, our CBPG, their CBPG hit, hit the legislative appropriation real hard next year. This year, where are we gonna focus our CBPG and our legislative priorities?
I think, um, we wanna focus on the historic county courthouse, get as much as we can to complete that project, and then we also did mention to Representative Gonzalez our, our deep need for equipment and public works equipment. And he, he understands that need, and he certainly wants the constituents to have what we need to give, what we need to have to be able to provide the services that they need. So, um, I think we probably focus on this, as well as the sheriff's priority that we have every year for vehicles on, on them. And I think that would, if we could get enough money to complete the historic county courthouse, I think we will be busy, so we'll have a busy year with our legislative ones.
Sounds good. But, uh, so that, that makes a lot of sense for legislative priorities, I think, for all of us. Uh, CBPG, we have, we've been thinking about Medio, that's no longer the case. We've, we've mentioned Los Cortobos, but the south end of Los Cortobos is all houses around the golf course. They're expensive homes, don't know if it's gonna qualify. Uh, we do not do this last minute.
And, Mr. Chairman, that's where we're at now, is trying to figure out what will qualify best, and what will be the best project for us to recommend to the commission as a whole. Um, we're looking certainly around that area, um, because of the, the distribution of CBPG as it has been in the past, so we're doing what we can, in Commissioner Fambro's district, to find the right project that will qualify.
Mr. Ross.
Chairman, the vice chairman didn't recognize that comment.
Mr. Chairman, um, I wanna go back to the courthouse first. I, I would like to see if we could direct our county manager to prepare a packet for the governor's office, similar to what was done with Comino Medio, uh, with all the details, New Mexico True campaign, tag that into. So if that's gonna be what we're gonna promote, we need to get that letter and all the documentation for the courthouse. Uh, secondly, I would respectfully ask the commission to consider CBPG for my district. It easily qualifies for poverty level. Um, there is one road in particular, Camino Valdez, uh, which is in Valito. It is 1.4 miles. It is up against a hillside, it is a dirt road, and so there's a lot of icing and problems in the winter because it is up against a hillside. Um, there was another road we were thinking about, over San Juan. Um, that's a much longer road, and there's plans to lay irrigation pipes, so that might make it really complicated, but the easier road would be, um, Camino Valdez, 1.4 miles, and it, uh, I think the residents there would greatly appreciate it. So I would just ask that you, uh, consider that, um, when we have to pick CBPG. Thank you.
Actually, the process is the public picks and CBPG.
But we do set a priority and go, go from there, so we, we only have to determine our priorities.
Okay. So, um, with all that being said, Mr. Chairman, I will very soon, by the next meeting, have some more options on CBPG and, and look at more, um, alternatives, if there is gonna be alternatives, just to propose and have everything out on the table, just options.
Great. Do you think we're gonna get any, uh, responses to the RFP on indigency for our, our inmates? Do you have any way of knowing whether there's anybody out there?
Um, I don't know. I can't speculate on that, I sure hope so. I do think that there's a lot of needs that, um, some of the private, um, nonprofits out there in the community may help with transition from our institution back into the community. We're very interested in proposals and see what we get. So I certainly hope so, and, um, if you know anyone, by all means, encourage them. Um, another thing I just wanted to mention, um, our Forest Service, uh, collaboration over at the 911 area, uh, the Forest Service wants to be able to be in our building by March 2016. That's not a lot of time for us to work out a lease, um, with federal agency, and so at this point, I, I wanna let you know that we're getting, we're preliminarily getting going on this. We have some rough numbers, and I believe, um, Richard Sanchez and Mr. Malone have begun talking back and forth, but it's, it's a pretty real tight window, and I know, um, Mr. Malone would have liked to have started this probably a month or two ago, um, but we're doing our best now to get to that point. But just so you know, informationally, that is, their desire is to be in our building by March 2016.
And, Mr. Chairman, that's based on retire season, it is right there.
So, you know, we are, we're gonna work on that, we're gonna do our best to get something before you guys for approval, obviously, sooner than later, so. And then the last thing I wanted to just bring up, um, on the ADC tour, uh, we're just missing one, Commissioner, you go ahead and go through the tour. Our one commissioner goes, we'll go ahead and put together our report, bring it back to you, and we really hope by the 15th, we'll have that report before the commission. So, I'm not gonna say which commissioner, but it's cold, we're idiots. And that's all I have. If I have any questions or any concerns you may have for me at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Corto, for that report, and we appreciate it very much. Uh, Commissioner O'Donnell, you wanted to, um, inform us on some issues?
Yes, thank you. We will be cleaning up Camino Medio, um, Saturday. Americor, a team of about eight kids, uh, myself and Counselor Han, we will start at Fredbacher Park and go as far down as Camino Medio as we can. Uh, we will also do Camino Merced from Walmart. There's one stretch across Walmart, uh, between the Sun God and Century 21 that's really dirty, we'll, we'll do that. So that's about a three and a half hour cleanup. We're meeting at Walmart, parking lot at 9:00. If there are any commissioners who'd like to join and, and participate in the cleanup, uh, we will be somehow directing traffic, and I think the sheriff's been asked to help us along Camino Medio, 'cause there are some stretches that are, um, dangerous. Like the commission to consider changing our January 19th meeting date to maybe the following Tuesday. Um, I'll be in Santa Fe at NMAC, and so I will not be able to attend the January 19th meeting. And that is opening day of the legislature. I'm sure there's, you know, other commissioners who may want to attend, so I would ask that we move that date. And is that something we need to do now, or can we do it at the next meeting?
Chairman, we could do it at the next meeting, but if, um, it's the consensus of the commission to go in that route, it would be nice to know sooner than later, and that way we can give alternatives and try and set up. It is also, as Commissioner mentioned, the kickoff of the legislative session, it'll also be our NMAC legislative conference that week, which I believe will begin Tuesday evening, Wednesday. And so I know typically in the last few years, there has been a little bit of a conflict, and, and maybe why is to move it forward and move it back?
I agree, Mr. Chairman, I will be in a board meeting for the NMAC starting on Tuesday.
Mr. Chairman.
And I'm attending that as well.
And I could, too, help.
Mr. Chairman, I don't expect my schedule to drive any of this, but I just want to alert you that I have a hearing on the 26th, so I wouldn't be able to attend it, quite likely to attend at my place.
We'll talk about you, Paul.
Okay.
So then I guess I would ask that we make it on the 26th, or forego a second meeting in January? Either/or?
Okay. The 26th would work for us, I mean, if, if we, if.
No, I would mean the next week.
On the February of that street.
Chairman, Commissioner, maybe we could play it by year, just flat on the one meeting, and if the workload dictates a second meeting in January, we can then schedule it at that time.
Great. Excellent, Commissioner.
Thank you. And then just finally, I'm going to meet, if you does cancel, the Secretary of Finance again, and make a promise to see if we release the grant money for the Rio Fernando. Wish you luck.
That's a big one. That's a good one. Thanks.
Uh, Mr. Corto.
Just to piggyback on, um, what Commissioner O'Donnell said on what is happening outside of here with the Americor, I could get an email, um, yesterday from Senator Heinrich's office. He will be in attendance. So Senator Heinrich will be here in Towns, um, for the, uh, Not Forgotten Outreach, at the Not Forgotten Outreach Center at 2:15. And so I would like to invite commissioners to come and visit with Senator Heinrich.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
2:15 on Saturday. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Fambro.
Free lighting at the, at the Plaza is tonight, beginning at 4:00, if all of us were invited, but also there's a fundraiser, Country Club on Sunday for stray hearts and homeless shelter. I will be in attendance, so we have a quorum, I won't talk to you, maybe, not being rude, I'm just hoping that will.
I'll be there, and I won't talk to you.
And I'll be there, too.
Who?
But I will talk to you, but socially.
Right, we'll say hello.
I mean, reconsider.
All right, thank you, uh, for that. Now, we are down to our last item, which is a legal matter, 15A, and, uh, this is a discussion and decision regarding Dos County versus Carmen Real. This is a, um, now, it can be discussed in executive session under two separate exemptions, one for litigation and the other for acquisition of property. Uh, one is, one is 10151H7, and, and the one on property is 10151H8, so we have ample legal authority for going into executive session, and I know our attorney would like us to do so, so I'll make a motion to go into executive session. I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chair Fambro.
Yes.
Commissioner Gagos.
Yes.
Commissioner Romano.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell, as Chairman Blakenhart.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, we'd like to request that you go upstairs to the executive conference room. Right. We have a motion to come back in session. So, I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chair Fambro.
Yes.
Commissioner Gagos.
Yes.
Commissioner Romano.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Chairman Blakenhart.
Yes, Mr. Malone, can you please, uh, inform the, uh, public about, uh, our executive session meeting?
Yes, the county commission met in executive session to consider Towns County et al. versus Carmen Real et al., uh, pursuant to two exemptions to the Open Meetings Act 10151H7, which allows for discussion pending with threatened litigation, and exemption 10151H8, which allows for the for the discussion of the purchase, acquisition, and disposal of real property. The commission only discussed that matter, no decision was made.
We have a motion. Some move, Mr. Chairman, second.
Vice Chair Fambro.
Yes.
Commissioner Gagos.
Yes.
Commissioner Omedo.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Chairman Blakenhart.
Yes. I believe we have a motion to reflect a decision.
Mr. Chairman, I'll take a stab at it. I move that this commission allow our legal department the authority to dismiss the quiet title suit in this matter, but also to proceed with condemnation of land areas surrounding the county buildings, and the land area will be decided, the land area needed will be decided by staff and recommended to the commission at a later date.
Second. Call for the vote.
Vice Chair Fambro.
Yes.
Commissioner Gagos.
Yes.
Commissioner Omedo.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Chairman Blakenhart.
Yes.
Take that.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman. I want to go back to the courthouse first. I would like to see if we could direct our county manager to prepare a packet for the governor's office, similar to what was done with Comino Medio, with all the details of New Mexico True campaign, tag that into. So if that's going to be what we're going to promote, we need to get that letter and all the documentation for the courthouse. Secondly, I would respectfully ask the commission to consider CBPG for my district. It easily qualifies for poverty level. There is one road in particular, Camino Valdez, which is in Valito. It is 1.4 miles. It is up against a hillside. It is a dirt road, and so there's a lot of icing and problems in the winter because it is up against a hillside. There was another road we were thinking about, over San Juan. That's a much longer road, and there's plans to lay irrigation pipes, so that might make it really complicated, but the easier road would be Camino Valdez, 1.4 miles, and it,